Let's go ahead and get started. So Bob, what I'm gonna do is when it's time, just in a few minutes, we'll go down.
By the way, the tree is beautiful, but can I suggest that they get bigger ones next time this year? You know how many weeks I saw them?
Twenty, they got twenty-seven thousand. Literally.
I know.
Exactly, they need one, exactly.
The guys were over there for a good four weeks.
That's right.
I was over there every Wednesday during the month.
Okay.
And they were there all for...
Okay, sounds good. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Council members? All right, everybody ready? Well, good evening and welcome to the November 21th Federal Way City Council meeting. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us today and for those watching on TV, we've got a great council meeting had, some great public comment, and a lot of public issues to address. We started off this evening with a study session on cellphone towers and then our 2018 legislative agenda, which will be presented, the proposed legislative agenda will be presented at the next council meeting, the last council meeting of the year, on December 5th. So, without further ado, I'm killing time because I'm still in denial. All right, this is the last council member, the last meeting for Councilmember Bob Selsky. He's a dear friend of everybody up on this dais and many, many thousands in the community. And Bob went to Federway High School a few decades ago, and, exactly, and which we'll discuss. Federal Way Eagle, always true and true. So, what I would ask is, I've got a little something here. What I suggest is perhaps me and Councilmember Selsky, my friend, go down to the podium, and I've got a little something to give him, and it would give him an opportunity to speak to everyone here in the council from the dais. So, Councilmember Selsky?
Before I get into my comments, I just, I do want to say that there are certain people that you come across in your life and in your profession, which you just have, that just have impeccable character, integrity, people that you know that when you talk to, you're always getting this great scoop, people that you know are really after it for the right reasons. And I, it has been my honor and privilege to serve alongside Bob Selsky. He has served the city with distinction for years. We were lucky to have him back before the city as, in this role as a city council person. He was appointed to fill an unexpired term, and therefore, when the election results that we just had are certified, his service to the city will come to an end. But what will not come to an end is our undying gratitude for his service to his community and for all of the things that he's done. And so, I've got a little something I want to give on behalf of the city and the council, in the community. It is a plaque that says, "Councilmember Bob Selsky, in appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of Federal Way, Washington in your capacity as a city council member, in January 2017 through November of 2017." On behalf of a grateful city, Bob, thank you.
Well, thank you Mayor Jim Farrell. I don't even know where to start, but I guess I can start by saying thank you to the council for having appointed me back in January to another year to serve with this distinguished group right here. It has been my honor and my privilege to serve with such professionals, such people who have deep care for the city and the, and the community and the citizens of the, of the city as well. You each hold a very near and dear place in my heart and always will, and I just appreciate all that you do, all the, the support you've given to me, the support you've given to the community. And to the community, it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve you as well. During this past year, I think we've, we've hit on some major topics. We've made some major progress in some areas that we needed to, but there's certainly a lot more to do as well. And so, I just encourage you to continue your work on behalf of the city, to continue to move things forward, just that legislative agenda that we looked at tonight, the items that we studied in the special session. So many things are in front of the city, but I know we have the talent and we have the ability to keep moving forward with this body that's up on the dais. And I look forward to the successor to position number two, Jesse Johnson. He's a brilliant young man. I know he's gonna do great things for the city. I know he'll climb the learning curve quickly and join this, this body right here, as well as Hong Tran, who's also gonna be coming onboard as well. I wish you both the best. I know you're gonna work hard, you're gonna study hard, you're going to, again, integrate into this group right here and, and help our citizens and our community to move forward so that we can be the community that we want to be. So with that, I thank everybody. I thank you all. Mayor Farrell, thanks for the, for the kind introduction and the presentation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And council members, would you like to say anything before we start the reception? We're gonna have a reception for about fifteen minutes. Councilmember Sepha Dawson, then Councilmember Copeng, and Councilmember Duclair. Councilmember Sepha Dawson?
Just want to say thank you, Bob, for your leadership. You were a great chair of the land use. You have taught me a lot. You have really helped me understand some things, and especially when I've had questions about the budget, you've, you've always come prepared. And I do appreciate that, and I appreciate that you have given me the opportunity or allowed me to lean on you. And moving forward, hopefully, we can still, you know, talk and, and talk about some issues, but also, you have helped me become a better me, because by watching what you do, I was forced to also follow suit. So, just want to say thank you for that modeling for me. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Lydia. It was my pleasure.
Councilmember Copeng?
Bob, it was a pleasure to serve with you. I think the, the mayor misspoke to me and said your service to the city will end. I believe that you will continue to serve the city as called upon, and appreciate that. It may not be in elected office, but I know that you really are connected to our city and care deeply about its outcome. Also appreciate your gracious words to Jesse, looking forward to serving with him. But I think that we have, I think, we really have, owe you a debt of gratitude for being able to step in and really, without any, without missing a step, get right in, right in full speed and dive in with full, full passion and commitment to do the great job that we all, I think, expected and hoped for. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mark.
Councilmember Duclair?
Well, I had the pleasure of working with Bob when he was elected to a four-year term. As a matter of fact, there were three of us that shared an office, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, myself, and Bob. And we used to have some nice discussions in there. As a matter of fact, one of the topics was the PAC. When we were first looking at it, they were two different projects, the PAC and, I forget what the other thing was, Jean, but it was, it might have been, it was cooking, right?
Event center.
Event center. Well, there was two different things, though. There was a conference center and the event center.
Right.
And we were talking about that, and we, we questioned, could we put it together in one building? And, and the deputy mayor had some information about something up in Snohomish County that did that. So, we took the field trip up there. That was fun. We were in a school bus. We drove up there, we had a good time, we looked at the place, we talked to the individual, and came back and reformed what we were doing and put it into one building. And we saved a lot of money doing that. And, and I think that's something that we can be very proud of, and you should be very proud of. And we have a beautiful facility here. As a matter of fact, there's a commercial on TV, and every time I see it, it looks just like the PAC. It's, it's the same type of building, and it has the same venue like we have, and it's, it's a beautiful thing. And you can be proud of the fact that you were a part of the original start of that, Bob. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deanie.
Deputy Mayor Burbidge, then Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Bob, I'm going to miss you. I've so enjoyed serving with you, and I appreciate your dedication, your trustworthiness, your, your integrity. And, you know, I think when you made your comments, we could all understand the value that you have brought to our city. And I, I wish you well in the future, but I agree with Councilmember Copeng that we, we haven't heard the last from you. And I know that you will be paying close attention to the future events in our city. And I'm hoping that you'll weigh in at any time when you see, when you think we need some comments, some suggestions, please do that. And so, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean. We will weigh in together.
All right.
From the other side.
Councilmember Honda?
I just wanted to say thank you, and I, I wish you the very best. I know that you have more grandchildren than I have. No, actually, I think I might have one more at this point, but you, you're gonna beat me, I'm sure. And you get to enjoy those, those kids. And anyway, good luck, good luck in the Olympics this year. We'll all be rooting for your family. And keep us informed of what's going on.
All right, thank you, Susan. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I want to say thank you for your service. I've, you've taught me a lot as, as currently the youngest person in the council. And I've appreciated all the little life lessons, all the little life tidbits that you've given me. And, and so, for that, I'm really grateful. I've known you since I was a fairly small kid. We've gone to the same church. You've known my family for a long time, and I cherish that friendship. And so, I look forward to staying in contact with you, and I expect you doing your homework. And what I mean by that is, watch the city council meetings. Be engaged, you know, and stay in touch with us as well, because I know that we appreciate hearing you. And in a, in a democracy, we have decisions that are made. And I also want to congratulate, I'm looking for him in the audience, Jesse Johnson, who is the incoming council member. I know, I, thank you. And I know that him and I met earlier, and certainly I look forward to working with him. And of course, Juan Tran, council member elects, are in, in the audience as well, and so look forward to working with him. But like I said, there's, there's so much to life, and there's so much more learning to do. And as one of my nutritionists on the council, I look forward to staying in touch through that, and on many other life goals as well. So, thank you so much, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
So, if you'll indulge, indulge me just for a moment, we actually have a few young families here. We've got the swearing in of three police officers. Before we start the reception, why don't we do the swearing in of the, of the three police officers, and that way we, and we can get these young families moving. We will have the Chief, Chief of Police come up, and all come down as well. And then, following the introduction of our police officers in the swearing in, the brief reception will start in honor of Councilmember Selsky.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of the council. It is my pleasure to introduce to you and to our citizens the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department, and the oath of office will also be given by Mayor Farrell tonight. First, we have Officer Luis Defeat. Louis, if you could take half a step forward so people know for sure who you are. Officer Defeat comes to us as an experienced lateral police officer. Luis attended school in Bremerton, Washington, and later relocated to Indiana, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice administration. He comes to us as a lateral police officer after serving as an Indiana State Trooper since 2012. Luis is a second lieutenant in the Army National Guard. He is fluent in Spanish, and he and his wife are proud parent of an eighteen-year-old son, Oliver. Also joining him tonight is his wife, Sarah, mother-in-law Cheryl, and their son, Oliver. So, if you could maybe wave your hand so we know where you're at. Back the way in the back. Congratulations. Next, we have Officer Truitt Hardl. Officer Hardl is an entry-level police officer, recently graduating from the police academy in October. Prior to embarking on his law enforcement career, Truitt served in the United States Army as a specialist E4 with the Second Ranger Battalion. During his military service, he was deployed to South Korea, and he earned his three sets of airborne wings, parachuting in America, Australia, and Korea. He holds a bachelor's degree in accounting from University of Arizona, and he is married to his wife, Madison. And he's got quite a bit of fan here tonight, fan group, but his wife, Madison, is here, the in-laws, Mr. and Mrs. Long, and sister-in-law, McKinsey. So, if you could wave your hands, welcome. Thank you. Welcome to the Federal Way family. And then, we have Joseph Rodriguez. Officer Joseph Rodriguez was born in Southern California, but he has spent a majority of his life here in the Puget Sound area. As a recent graduate of the police academy, Joseph is currently in his early stages of his police field training program. He previously worked as a delivery driver for the United Parcel Service, and he holds a bachelor's degree in biology from the University of Puget Sound. Joseph and his wife are proud parents of a nine-month-old daughter, Shirley. When not working, Joseph enjoys time with his family and fishing. And his wife, Brianna, is here tonight with their daughter. Okay, so please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Officers, if you could come here, the mayor will give you the oath of office.
All right, gentlemen, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Joseph Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
County of King, state of Washington.
County of King, state of Washington.
As such duties as prescribed by law.
As such duties as prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, the reception will start. Let's go about fifteen minutes, everybody. This is to honor Councilmember Selsky. We'll reconvene in about a few minutes to work. Thank you. Enjoy the game.
Okay, everybody. Exactly. All right. Okay, council. As per usual. Oh, was that my outside voice? Nothing. Exactly. Okay, everybody ready? All right. Now, let's get back to business. So, we left our business on item 4B, Certificate of Appointment to Human Services Commission. Councilmember Copeland.
I would like to invite Sophia Mayo to come forward to accept a certificate of appointment for the, to the Human Services Commission. While she's coming up, we're issuing this, Sophia was a non-voting member, and she has now become a voting member and is hereby appointed to serve as a voting member of the Federal Way Human Services Commission for a term to expire January 31st, 2019.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for this additional opportunity to continue in the commission. In the last few months, I've had an opportunity to get a glimpse into the great work that the local nonprofits do for those in need and how the city helps support and fund that. And I just want you to know that I don't take this opportunity lightly. And also, big thank you to those who are in the commission because they're great people and also your city staff who help support them. They're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, now moving on to the mayor's emerging issues and report. First, we'll have, we've got good news from our police chief, Andy Wong, who's going to come up and talk about the cops grants that we applied for. Chief?
Thank you, mayor. I am very pleased to report that the City of Federal Way has been awarded five police officer positions under the 2017 Department of Justice Cops Hiring Program. The amount of federal fund to be awarded to us over a three-year period is $625,000. This will bring our total commission of police officer positions from 131 to 136. We were one of three police agencies in the state of Washington to receive the cops grant. As one of the fastest-growing cities in the state of Washington, we grew over 3,000 people last year, and we were the fifth fastest-growing city in the state. So, these positions will certainly assist us in meeting the service demands in our community. So, a great job by our staff to submit the application and to receive the grant funding. Very competitive. There was only 179 agencies in this country that received the cops grant funding, and we were one of those agencies, one of three in the state of Washington.
All right. Thank you, chief. Great news. We've been waiting on, thank you. Now, that 136 commissioned officers matches a previous high that we were at pre-recession levels. We had gone all the way back down to 121 after, after the passage of Proposition 1, I believe, back in 2006. We were able to get up to 136. So, we've been attempting for, you know, well over a decade to get back up to that high watermark, and we've got some more room to grow because we want to get our, our ratio to at least about 140, 141 officers. So, we're well on our way. Thank you, chief. All right. With that, we've got the, the tree lighting coming up, and I want to have our Parks Director, John Hutton, talk about our annual community holiday tree lighting. John?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of city council and the public. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite the entire public out next Saturday, December 2nd, at 4:00 to 5:00 PM at Town Square Park for our annual tree lighting, our holiday tree lighting. We've been working diligently on that tree now for over three weeks, and I can report to you tonight that there are over 27,000 lights on that tree, which is a ton of lights. These are the mini LEDs. They're in great shape. Tree looks fantastic. We've got a full program for you. We'll pack your hour with great entertainment, including the Federal Way U-Symphony, the orchestra from Brigadoon, the, excuse me, the Brigadoon Elementary School Choir, Harmony Kings, and TJ's Drum Line, along with the Federal Way Corral, will all be performing. So, we'll be getting them on and off the stage quickly, packing that hour for you in, with great entertainment. It's going to be a lot of fun. Santa Claus will be making an appearance, and he's being escorted by South King Fire and Rescue on an antique truck. It'll be a ton of fun for kids and all people of our community. Like to invite everybody out for a great time, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Councilmember Duclos.
I don't have any questions. All right. I go up to the Town Square Park and do a mile on Wednesdays, and I have watched them putting those little tiny bulbs on that giant tree, hour by hour, and it's gorgeous, but my hat's off to the Parks people for their efforts to make that tree so beautiful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duclos suggested during the recess that perhaps maybe next year we use bigger lights so it doesn't take the requisite three or four weeks.
Sorry, you're breaking up, sir.
At 27,000 lights, you should be able to see the tree from space.
You will be, uh, CTAC called they're going to divert air traffic around the parks.
Well, that would be helpful if they would divert it away from our houses and over the park would be just fine, okay? But bigger lights would help, just a little bit.
Just a little?
Yeah, the staff, because it took them hour by hour to do that.
It does take a lot of time.
So, a week from this Saturday, December 2nd, 4:00 PM, with the lights going on at 4:45.
That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, now, we've got, as per our normal custom, we don't normally have a second meeting in December at the last council meeting. The council canceled the second meeting so people can count on taking their vacations. And so, just to advise everybody and make sure everybody's aware, a reminder that the December 19th normally scheduled city council meeting has been canceled. Okay, so, December 5th is the last council meeting of the year. It will also be council, Deputy Mayor Burbidge's last meeting, which we're also in denial over, so. But we've got a new friend on the way with Hong Tran, and we're excited about his entry, but more to come later next week. Okay, community events. We actually, I want to say a very special thank you to Tim Johnson, our Economic Development Director. We really rolled out the carpet for the Olympic Diving Committee. We had a reception, a lunch with the folks. This is about really making sure that the road to Tokyo for the Olympics in 2020 goes through Federal Way. And we've got a world-class facility in the King County Aquatic Center, and we, back in 2012, prior to the London Olympics, in all of the qualifiers actually had to come through Federal Way for the diving, and that's what we are in the process of competing for. I just want to say thank you to the council, all our staff, especially Tim Johnson, just did a phenomenal job rolling out the red carpet, myself, and we actually had representatives from King County as well. This would really be a huge boon to the community. I'd like to thank our one of the Public Works staff for getting the Olympic banners out. Just so many people made that successful, and the individual with the Terry, Terry Thomas from the, or Terry, from the Olympic Committee, who I think was really, really impressed with all the efforts that were made on his behalf. He just said he wanted to, he just wanted to take a look at the pool. I don't think he had any idea that we were going to really engage in this much of a rollout, the welcome. So, I think that, at this stage, that was, we're in, we're in good space for that. We had the Federal Way Community Caregiving Network Super Supper on 11/9. That was a great event. Really, I'd like to thank Casey Treat and Christian Faith Center for opening up their church. It was a tremendous event, all the churches and all the faith-based organizations, and it was just absolutely fantastic to see the Community Caregiving Network in, just in full stride, in great soups, and just an opportunity to really think about the folks that are less fortunate to lend a helping hand to that. We had a Veterans Day celebration at Todd Beamer High School, put on by the Historical Society in Kiwanis. Had an opportunity to speak there, and, and that was on 11/11, obviously, on Veterans Day. That was a really great event. And I'd like to say, in this very room, actually, on November 14th, exactly a week ago, we actually had the human, excuse me, the Homeless Mothers and Children Initiative, HMCI, we had a luncheon where we invited the faith-based community. We had 50 representatives here in a, in a big rectangle luncheon. 50 representatives, 26 churches represented, in which we really brought the faith-based community together to talk about solutions. I'd like to thank Councilmember Honda, and who's, who I asked to be a co-chair of HMCI, along with community volunteer and activist Sherri Edwards. The two of them are co-chairs on HMCI. It was a great opportunity to really talk about what's being done in the community and how can we coordinate and make sure that services are streamlined and make sure they're provided. But also, as we are, we're making a legislative ask of the legislature to provide $100,000 to seek housing for homeless mothers and children, many of whom, the children, many of these shelters are not allowed, or don't allow minor children. And so, we, when the temperatures are now obviously getting very cold, we've been working around the, you know, around the year to make sure that there is a location to make sure that these people can come out of the cold and that we care for them in a compassionate way. And so, those efforts are ongoing, and I'd really like to thank Susan and Sherri and every member of HMCI, who've got a dedicated team with Jeff Watson and Sarah and quite a number of folks in the community that are dedicated to making sure that we're addressing these needs. Okay, that's my report. Now, on to the most important part of the evening, which is citizen comment. I'll go ahead and list a few folks so they can get on deck, as it were, and then everybody knows the rules. First, we'll have Lori Seacrest, then Dana Holloway, then Marie Shakwa, and then Sunita Hunter and Michael Hunter, and we've got a few others, but, so.
Okay, so, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council members, and city staff, neighbors, friends, and citizens. I am the proud president, Lori Seacrest, proud president of the Save Warehouse Campus Organization. So, mayor, the Save Warehouse Campus Organization looks forward to continuing and building upon our relationship with you and the city, so congratulations on your win. So, it's appropriate that this week is a week for thanks, and that is what I want to do tonight. The Save Warehouse Campus Organization is very thankful that on November 13th, the King County Council members unanimously adopted the supplemental budget that included the $1 million appropriation for the East Hyla Rose Watershed Conservation that will acquire and protect the open space of the 54-acre west shore of North Lake. We are also very thankful that the county funding requires the $1 million match from the city's Surface Water Management Fund. Well, we all know that these funds are just a start of the multi-year fundraising campaign that will aid in our long-term vision for the conservation of this land alongside the development. As King County Council Member, Council Member, Men, Pete Von Reichweier stated, "This money is a down payment on our future. Once this property is lost, it is not just lost for the generation, it is lost forever." We are also very thankful that the city has brought in Fortera to help with the fundraising efforts and in the negotiation with the landowner for the potential purchase. We appreciate the city's recognition of this need and the, including it of the, in the, including the $250,000 capital grant in its 2018 legislation priorities. The Save Warehouse Campus Organization also is very thankful to the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, who in May of this year named the historic Warehouse Campus as one of its most endangered properties, which brings attention to the threatened buildings, sites, and historic places in Washington State. And more recently, a few weeks ago, the Washington State Architectural Historian issued a the Washington State Architectural Historian issued a determination of eligibility for listing the former warehouse campus in the National Register of Historic Places. We are again thankful to the King County Council for passing this week an ordinance sponsored, again by PVR, authorizing the county's executive to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Federal Way to provide landmark designation and protection services. While we do understand that the City of Federal Way's historic ordinance specifies that a property owner must provide written consent before a property can be nominated as a King County landmark, we believe it is a shame that a city such as Federal Way has a historic preservation ordinance but is handcuffed by an owner who stands to benefit financially by piecemealing this historic gem, a landmark that is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and holds the power of what historic landmarks get preserved and protected. We are hopeful that the county landmark designation and the protection ordinance will ensure the City of Federal Way takes a stronger stance to protect this regionally-recognized property. Again, on behalf of the Save Warehouse Campus Organization, we are very thankful to the city, county, state, and Fortera, and for all of our supporters. Together, we can ensure that this property's green space, spaces, the trails, the habitat, and more importantly, the unique character is not only protected for this generation, but forever. So thank you, and I hope that everyone has a happy and blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Lori. Dana Holloway?
Good evening. My question, first of all, I'm really glad we saw in three new officers. I think like most of people or citizens, we're always glad when we can get more police in here. So I have some questions regarding that. I've gone over the budget, and it's really difficult for me to understand, so I'm just going to ask. Do these three new officers, are they increasing the total number of officers we have? Are they backfilling for people that are leaving? That's the first question. What is the current number of officers that we were supposed to have in 2017? What is the forecast for 2018 for our officers? And, that's it.
Okay, great. So, Dana, why don't you stay close to the, so Chief, first question, backfilling. So we were authorized 131, correct?
Yes, we're currently authorized 131, and with the COPS grant, brings us to 136.
So where did these three officers, what Ms. Holloway is asking is, where do these three officers take us with regard to the 131?
They're backfilling, making positions within the agency.
So after those three, how many do we have left to fill before we get to the 131 on hand?
Currently, we have five vacancies, and we will be hiring one more lateral officer next week. That'll bring us to four. And we anticipate sometime in December, we'll probably get close to 131.
Okay, then, so, and then 2017, we're going to have these five, 2017, we, we got the 2017 COPS grant, but obviously, we're not going to be able to get these five officers for the COPS grant. It applies to probably 2018. Is that right?
Yes, it'll go in, definitely go into 2018 to fill those positions.
Okay. Do you anticipate, is there a request? I know that we're going through the 2018, we previously did the 2017 and 18 biennial budget. We'll go through a review in the early spring for the 2018 budget. Do you have a request to go, to hire any more officers for 18 beyond these five?
I think we'll be at 136, and when we begin working on the biennial budget for 19 and 20, we'll look at staffing, population, and we'll be making a recommendation to you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, so Dana, that's the answer is, so what we're, our goal now is we're 127. We're going to get to 131 hopefully by the end of the year, and the goal is to fill these five officer positions that we got from COPS grants, that they're going to pay a certain percentage of, two-thirds, over three-quarters of, for three years.
Okay.
So we're going to, our goal, and what we're going to be working on, is getting to the 136 mark by next year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, Marie Shakwa. It is a good question, Dana. It's such a moving target sometimes with, with people retiring and moving on. Marie?
Hi, I haven't been here for a while. I'm Marie Shakwa, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, short-timer, and good luck on your future adventure. And I know you'll still be around the city and the rest of the council. Myself, and I'm sure others, are glad that the elections are over. There are no more mailings, no more phone calls, TV ads, political signs. And I'm going to read part of the Federal Way City Ordinance 99-357, which relates to signs, to reacquaint you with the code. I'm going to read part of it directly. I couldn't have said it much better myself. "The unregulated proliferation of signs detracts from the economic value of a community. Such proliferation can and does create a visual distraction for the drivers of motor vehicles, and thereby, thereby detracts from the traffic safety. And the signs are also unfriendly to pedestrians. Reasonable regulation of signs serves to alleviate visual clutter and thereby preserves communities' scenic, economic and aesthetic values. Sign regulation protects the public health, safety and welfare by controlling the placement, removal, installation, maintenance, size and location of signs. Amendments to the sign code will also provide better regulation of political signs. Also, the number and size and of the signs produce a negative effect on the visual image of the city. The best example is where multiple signs for the same person, as well of other candidates, are on the same block of the street. For example, Southwest Campus. How about South 312th and First Avenue?" Here's some food for thought. "I think the political signs do not follow this ordinance. Here are some of my suggestions to add to the code on the political signs. How long should the signs be posted? One candidate had signs up since April. That's seven months." I'll hurry it up here. "Limit the number of signs from each candidate in one location. Remove the signs 10 days after election," which Bureen already has that in their code. I don't know if there's a penalty or not. "And I hope we are more professional at the next election, and think how these signs look to visitors to our city. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving."
Thank you, Marie. Sinetta Hunter, and then Michael Hunter.
First, I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. As mentioned, my name is Sinetta Hunter, and I'm a resident of the Federal Way Public School District. I've worked in, in the criminal justice system since I was 18 years old, and I recently turned 50. It's interesting, as I listen to the oath taken by those fine officers this evening, if that oath, if that oath had been upheld, I would not be here tonight. I would also like to thank our supporters for coming out. Will you guys just stand so they'll know who you are? I mentioned, I've been in the criminal justice system since I was 18, and naturally being familiar with that system, I raised my son to stay out of that system. I was successful in doing that until he turned 21, and the Federal Way Police Department decided it was now time for my son to enter into the criminal justice system. My son and his friend were witnesses to a drunk-driving accident, and for reasons still unknown to them and us, they were arrested for trespassing. Even though the property manager has repeatedly said the young men were not trespassing, she never even saw them. Officer Schmidt lied in his report, saying that the store clerk requested, excuse me, that these, the young men be trespassed. Officer Darrell, Schmidt, Novak and Hinkle proceeded to arrest these young men, even though they were standing at their car. Officer Darrell comes from behind my son, grabs him by the neck and chokes him. If anyone else would have done that, they would be charged with a felony. No justification for putting your hands on someone's neck, knowing they can die in seconds just because they're standing in a parking lot. They took these two young men to jail, where they had to sleep on the floor, and their parents worried about them all night because we didn't know where our children were. They, they towed my car, even though they could have just called me to pick it up because it was legally parked. And even this arrest was unnecessary. All they had to do, if they felt the boys were doing something wrong, was issue them a citation. They did not have to go to jail. And my son has been traumatized for the rest of his life. And this same officer, Chris Darrell, shot an unarmed man, and that man has been permanently damaged, and the city had to pay over $300,000 defending that action. This same officer, Darrell, has complaints filed on him from nurses at St. Francis Hospital because of his behavior. This same officer arrested an elderly man just because he wouldn't tell him where his son was, and he had to be ordered to let the man go. This same officer, Darrell, has had to take classes for his anger, and yet this man is training other officers. This same officer has admitted on tape that he can't control his excessive use of force because he's afraid that someone is always trying to fight him. I can only hope that someone doesn't have to lose their life before this officer and other ones like him are held accountable for their actions. As the mayor is aware, Federal Way Police has a reputation for this behavior from his years of being in the prosecutor's office, where him and I worked together for over 15 years. These charges against my son were dropped a year later after he was never, not able to work, and his life was permanently transformed by this. We are here because we care about the citizens of Federal Way and want officers like these held accountable. We care, and the only question for me tonight is do you? Our lawsuit is about change, and let's hope that we don't wait until it's too late. Thank you. Have a Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Sinetta. Thank you, Sinetta. All right, and now, Michael.
You know, I'm a leader in the community. I'm a pastor. I also work with At Risk Youth for the last eight years. And one of the things in our conversation with At Risk Youth is their attitude toward law enforcement. You know, one of the biggest influencers in my life had this to say, which was my dad. He said, "How can I hear the things you say when the things you do keep ringing in my ear?" And when you talk about leadership, we set the pace. I set the pace for my family. When I walk in the house and I act like a tyrant, I set the pace for my family, and it says to my family, "This is the way that you ought to act." And if everybody condones how I act, then what I'm telling my children is that when you grow up, you act like this in society. And when we have officers who, when you just, when the mayor just got done reading the oath to these three officers, I heard a lot of things in there that were said that was not exhibited by these officers that treated my son like he was treated. And so my concern is that leadership is setting the pace for our community and saying that, "It's okay. Act the fool. Do whatever you want to do, because ain't nothing going to happen." And I think that if we allow him to continue, and if we allow this kind of behavior to continue in our communities and in our societies, then what we're doing is we're saying, "That's okay. That's okay for you to do that." And I think that today, as we stand here, I believe that this particular charge that my son received when he didn't need it needs to be changed. And I'm asking you to really think about that, because if you pat him on the back, or just slap him on the wrist and let him walk around like that, something else will happen. I remember one time, as a young man, growing up, I had a scenario where I was working a job, and somebody on that job didn't like me, and so they set it up so that I would get fired. Do you know that the manager left the building okay in this behavior? And he left the building, and when he left the building, he asked another leader, when he came back to the building, if I was still in the building, and when he found out I was still in the building, he left the building. So I had to come back the next day because he was supposed to be the one that fired me, and I asked him, I said, "Why did you allow this to happen?" I said, "You know that right will overcome wrong." And you know what this leader's told me? He said, "No, it won't." And do you know that after I left that building, 30 days later, they gave him 30 minutes to pack his bags up and leave? Because right always overcome wrong. Don't let it be at the expense of somebody else before that right overcomes wrong.
Thank you, Michael. All right, Freddie Wilson?
Good evening, councilmen and public servants, and congratulations, Police Department, for your new hires. And I just stand before you, I guess I'll give you just a little bit of my background. I was a troubled child. I came up here from Detroit and seen some horrific things. And your community have not even experienced what I've seen. And I had issues for life that I've been scarred with. And I can't say it was from the public servant, but it was from the environment in which I came. But this state, the state of Washington, the state which I love, and I'm a member of Seattle, I'm from Seattle, but this state of which I love, and I've grown to love, which has changed me because of the love that I received from this community, Federal Way, and I know Casey Treat, I was in juvenile with Casey Treat, so I heard you mention him. And he was a bad actor. But, and I, I can attest to that. He was a bad, a really bad actor. But look, look at what he's doing for your community. So there's change. But when I see a young man who doesn't have that history, I see a young man who was raised on a code of ethics, that very code of ethics on which you sworn your officers in, that very code of ethics of which the very constitution that we uphold was built upon. And I hear a lot of people talking about, "I am of faith," and that is me. That is what changed me, was my faith and the belief of that code of ethics. And when I see that code of ethics being compromised, it hurts. It hurts me deeply, and I think, because I have grandchildren that's here in Federal Way, and I hold them to that code of ethics. And that code of ethics I've instilled, and I have my two grandchildren, only children here at the present, and I hold them. And then they live with me to that code of ethics. And so when I see, and when I see it, and I stand here, torn, a torn grandparent, and I think about all the things that's going on in our world, we got Black Lives Matter, cot lives matter, but what we fail to realize is what really matters, right and wrong. And that's what the public servants, that's what the officers are supposed to uphold, that law, our code of ethics, which is based on right and wrong. Now, if that's compromised because we have a big slush fund and we can just write a check, then what are we telling our future? My grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, my children, your children, what are we telling them? That it's okay? And I ask you guys, I leave this question with you, where's your code of ethics? Check your heart and tell me, where is your code of ethics?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Just a point of information, Ryan Cole, our city attorney, this is currently in litigation. Is that correct?
Yes, this is currently pending in federal court. It's going to be tried sometime next year.
Okay. At the beginning of the part of the year, or do you?
We haven't set a trial date. It's getting rescheduled right now.
Okay.
So we expect it to be either February or March of next year.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mr. Wilson and the Hunter family, thank you, and all the supporters. It's very important to hear these voices. It's very important to hear every voice. So thank you very much. And Sinetta is right, we work together at the domestic, actually, everyone knows Yarden Wydenfield. Yarden Wydenfield, myself, worked with Sinetta for years and years in the Domestic Violence Unit. So thank you so much for, for coming, and thank you, Michael. Okay, the next speaker is Suzanne Vargo. And then we're going to have a letter from Roger Flygar, and I don't have any other pink sheet, so if anybody else wants to talk, please let us know. Suzanne?
Hi, Council, Mayor, congratulations. Today, I'd like to talk about Aquifer Recharge Areas. Groundwater Groundwater is water that is found in zones of geological matter beneath the surface. The Vashont Till left large deposits of sand and gravel that help our water traverse freely across our lands in different depths. It is these large pores that are called aquifers. The groundwater is returned to the surface as springs and seeps, providing a base flow for perennial streams. It also provides our drinking water. Although some of the deep aquifers may be significant for water supply, it is the shallower aquifers that are especially important to our lower Puget Sound basin. The aquifers are directly connected to lakes and streams, and to date have been the most intensely used for water supply. Steep gradients in the water table elevation suggest recharge near the groundwater divided area in Twin Lakes and along the eastern basin from North Lake to Five Mile, Five Mile Lake. The conservancy land along 8th Avenue is also suggested to be another one of these main recharge areas. Science suggests that the groundwater migration may be as or more important than the rest of the direct surface exposure of aquifers. This means the removal of our tree roots and our native soils on the Warehouser campus will be detrimental to our water supply, as the water will no longer flow across these soils for filtration and will be exposed to the pollutants during development. Present data is sparse, and the recharge of aquifers through our area is a huge mystery as a whole. Nine reports were manifested from the late 80s and through the 90s that have been ignored by our city and King County that have not conducted any additional inventories. One of these significant areas is the conservancy land over on 8th Avenue. This area has 123 acres of wetlands. These wetlands provide significant groundwater discharge to the creek, which augments the flows during dry periods. This is frightening. All but 19 of those 123 wetlands are not inventoried. Because of this, they can be potentially developed. It is clear that our first priority is to map these inventoried wetlands ASAP. Is a prime example of not following the basin plans and putting development needs over the needs of our city and its citizens. It is a responsibility of this council to see that this process is executed immediately, work with King County, and solidify our conservancy land so it does not turn into a maintenance facility for our light rail. Please let us not sit idly by and watch our precious resources be filled with cement. I know you have all worked very hard and grateful for your efforts, but we have got to see some results. This is something that can be and must be done. To allow our highly sensitive areas to be developed because no one took the time to read the nine plans of our basin or realize the importance of how our watershed functions is completely inexcusable. It has been 30 years of no action. We have allowed too much time to transpire, and for the time is now. Enough with mitigating our wetlands in the name of progress. If all of you do not get it, we will all suffer greatly for your apathy. Please, our Growth Management Act protects or is protectant of these aquifers. Please look into that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right, now we have a letter submitted by Roger Flygar.
All right, this says, "To Federal Way City Council from Roger Flygar, to be read into the record. Commission alternate members. One, I would ask the council to consider making it a city policy that committee commission alternates be granted the ability to participate and vote as if a standing member, when there's opportunity by virtue of an absent voting member, to do so. Reasoning: In recent meetings of the Parks Commission, I was informed that I could not take the place of a standing voting member who was absent. As with other committees and boards I have served on outside the city government, I was operating under the impression that this would be the case, as it would assist in forming a quorum when voting members were absent. I was informed by the Parks Commission Chair that this was not the case in city commissions and formulated in Federal Way. In discussing this issue further with the Parks Commission Chair, it was pointed out the policy may be in this format because the alternates would be a way of learning the ropes to speak. However, the Parks Commission Chair additionally pointed out that a voting member was serving his first year as a voting member, and perhaps this issue regarding alternates needs to be addressed by the council. Action: I would ask that the Federal Way City Council pass legislation to enable alternates to stand in for absent voting members. Second point, firefighters, IAFF Local 2024. I would request that the city council and mayor issue a temporary permit to conduct fundraising by the IAFF Local 2024 for an event that has in the past been called Fill the Boot. Reasoning: Over the past several years, when the local was prohibited from doing this activity, their fundraising efforts have been extremely hampered. They've tried various other fundraising activities, but as was shared with me recently, have not been successful. Farmer's Market Chili Cook-Off, for example, I was told that in the beginning it was a moderately successful fundraising event, but the local withdrew in the last few years as it wasn't successful financially and was a bit more expensive. Action: I would ask that the Federal Way City Council grant a temporary permit for fundraising by the local IAFF 2024 with the times and locations to be jointly agreed to by the city and local 2024. Thank you for your patience, and I ask that the council pass these two requests unanimously. Best wishes, Roger Flygar.
All right, Ryan, for, when the council meets for its retreat, likely the first weekend in February, it's not confirmed yet, would you please make sure that the rule, that at least in regard to on the docket for possible consideration, or at least inclusion in the agenda?
Absolutely.
Let's bookmark this as just an item, and obviously, the council's going to be meeting about this coming up with their retreat.
Understood.
Let's bookmark that thing about the issue about alternates voting and the absence of regular committee members. And we'll just, we'll talk about that, the council will talk about that during their retreat, just to, we'll bookmark it and see if the council is interested in talking about that. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Jim. One of the points of Mr. Flygar in terms of fundraising for the firefighters, I know it's an issue that I've asked, and if I'm not mistaken, it'd be good to get a clarification on, was there was some legality issues, if I recall correctly, but just...
It's about selective enforcement, but Ryan, let's talk about that tomorrow, about getting a memo out to the council.
Sure.
Great, thank you very much. Good point. All right, as you can see, it's obviously, and I believe and I know the council does as well, that the most important thing is not just to listen to people when they come up here, but we work for the people in this community and folks who come up here, we try to get them the answers to these questions right away if we can, or to get back and report back as soon as possible. All right, that's all we've got for citizen comment. Now it's on to the consent agenda. These items have previously gone through committee and be passed with one item. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and read the items. I'll ask if a council member would want a particular item to be selected for individual consideration. All right, so the consent agenda includes item A, minutes for the November 7th, 2017, regular and special meetings. Item B, Military Road South and South 298th Street, Compact Roundabout Project, 30% Design Status Report. Item C, the Skateboard Agreement Renewal. Item D, the Acceptance of Water Quality Stormwater Capacity Grant. Item E, Resolution Sound View Manor Final Platte. Item F, Agreement Between the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, WTSC, and the Federal Way Police Department to Provide Grant Funding for Traffic Enforcement. Item G, On-Call Electrical Services Bid. And item H, Second Amendment to the Synergy Building Services Incorporated Agreement. Council members, are there, is there a particular item that a council member would want to pull for separate consideration? Hearing none. Deputy Mayor Birbert, you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move approval of items A through H on the consent agenda. Second?
Motion and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, now, moving on to the public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is for the 2017, 18 mid biennium budget adjustment and the 2018 property tax rate, continued from November 7th, 2017. The regular meeting is required by RCW 358.34. First, we'll have a truncated staff presentation by Adei Irululu, our Finance Director, followed by citizen comment, and then council discussion or questions. Adei?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council. We had a budget public hearing two weeks ago, and this is the second public hearing. Just as a reminder, I think as part of what we are presenting to the council, this is just an adjustment to 2017. It's a carryforward of the unspent amount of money from 2016, after the final audit, to 2017. This is not a new budget process, it's not a new budget hearing, it's just allocating few additional revenue for the council to authorize few grants that we've received during the year. The second part of this public hearing is also to levy the property tax to be collected in 2018. Based on the state analysis and based on the RCW, the city can show levy the lower of 1% for the IPD, IPD being the inflation rate. So for 2017, the IPD is 1.553. So the council needs to levy the lower of 1% and 1.553. That boils down to the council levying 1% increase over the 2017 levy. So I'll be glad to answer any question.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Hunter?
Thank you. Excuse me. On the human services funding, we recently paid on this Section 108 loan, which I believe had, I'd been told that money would come, to pay that loan would come out of the money we receive for CDBG. However, when I asked in FedRAC about it, you said they didn't care where it came from, that we just paid it. So in our human services funding for 2018, do we have, are we going to make up the money for that?
For the 2018, I think we have now secured the allocation for hard, but when that comes through, that payment will be taken out of the allocation for 2018. Based on the current budget, we plan to take it out of there, yes.
So will we find the resources in the general fund budget to make up the difference?
Correct.
For the cops grant, which is really exciting to get up to that many officers?
Yes.
What is our financial responsibility for the next four years after those?
For the cop grant, of course, that will be when we're dealing with amendment to 2018, but we're supposed to pay almost about, the cop grant will pay maybe about 60% of the salary. But it depends if you have somebody hired at lateral level, which is not the lowest. So the percentage may actually be lower, because you are now paying the lowest salary to somebody that is transferring, somebody that we're hiring at a lateral level. After three years, when the grant expires, yes, the city is responsible for the entire cost.
Do we have it? Will we be able to afford that?
For three years, for now, I think it depends on what we do between now and three years. I think, based on where we are now, I cannot read what will happen in three years, but, you know, I think it depends a lot on the revenue source that happened between now and three years, and the city needs to keep an eye on that.
Okay. And my last comment is, I appreciate the mayor including $100,000 in the legislative ask for homeless shelter. I had previously brought that up in September, asking if we could get $100,000, because working with Mary's Place, they opened two shelters in King County this last year, and King County provided the buildings, but they also provided $100,000 in funding for both of those shelters, which is why I asked for that $100,000. If the legislature is not able to provide $100,000 for the homeless women and children's shelter, do you foresee that perhaps we could provide that from the city?
Do we have ability to provide that $100,000 for 2018? As of now, I think we are in the process of putting the changes to 2018 together, and I have now finalized our work on 2018. I think probably next month, from next month, or when we bring to the council, we will have more information on the status of 2018. So, but as of now, the issue, I think what I have before the council is just 2017. I'm still working on the adjustment to 2018.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our Finance Committee Chair, Councilmember DuClo.
Councilmember Hunter, I know you're on the Finance Committee. We can put that on the agenda for further discussion and look at where the money's going to come from. So we'll make a note of that to make sure that we get that discussed in committee meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, council, any other questions? Comments? All right, Adei, thank you very much. Okay, citizen comment on that particular item? Is there any citizen comment? Okay, hearing none. Council discussions or questions? All right, hearing none. Councilmember DuClo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to close the public hearing on the 2017, 2018 mid biennium budget adjustment and the 2018 property tax rate.
Second?
There's been a motion and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. A great job, Adei, thank you. All right, council business. We're going to have a briefing regarding file number 1710010800AG, Wild Waves and Enchanted Parks Amendment to Development Agreement. First, we'll have a staff report from Dave Vandaway, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm here to discuss a proposed amendment to a development agreement between the city and Wild Waves slash Enchanted Parks, and tonight's agenda item is for information only. There's no council action required until December 5th, when a public hearing will be held. As some background, the city entered into a development agreement with the park in 1998, when the property was annexed into the city, and a lot of the requirements in that agreement correspond to the code as it was written in 1998. There have been two amendments to the agreement since then. This will be a third amendment. In the 20 years since then, city code and state law has changed quite a bit when it comes to traffic mitigation and stormwater requirements, so this proposed amendment will address some of those issues and also address some of the requests of the park. So there are six major revisions to the development agreement. The first is the maximum height limit. It's currently 125 feet for rides. The proposed height limit is 200 feet, and this applies only to that section of the park where you see roller coasters right next to I-5. The rest of the park has a much shorter height limit, so this would only affect the ride area. Secondly, are the stormwater standards. A lot of the requirements in the current agreement correspond to the old code. This new revision would simply reference the current city code so that when the park expands in the future, they'll have to address any stormwater impacts, much as any other business would in the city. Revision three updates the baseline traffic data in the development agreement, and this traffic data informs revision number four, which are the traffic mitigation standards. So in the future, when the park expands, when they generate more traffic, they will have to meet the current city code in regards to traffic mitigation. Revision number five regards the admission tax notification requirement. So if the city wants to impose a new tax on the park currently, they have to issue a 12-month notice. This revision would do away with that requirement. And the final revision is for the term of the agreement, which is set to expire next April. This amendment would extend the term for another 20 years through 2038. So in summary, the park will get an increased height limit for the ride area, and the city will get compliance with current development regulations in the event the park expands in the future. So there's no increase in the park size or in the allowable land uses through this development agreement, and we will discuss this further at the public hearing, as I mentioned, December 5th. I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Dave, you sent an email... Dave, you sent an email to council, I believe it was yesterday, talking about the history of this and what in the council option that they have next week. Can you please explain a little bit about, just briefly, the history and what the council is going to be given the opportunity to do or not do at the next council meeting?
Sure. So city code requires major development agreement amendments to be approved by council as ordinances. So at the public hearing on December 5th, there will be a first reading of the ordinance. Council has the option to either approve the ordinance as written and then hold the second reading in that same meeting and approve it, or to amend that agreement at that meeting, hold the second agreement and adopt that revised amendment, or to hold the first reading and deny the amendment.
Okay. What I meant was, we got into a situation where we were, actually, wasn't the first hearing supposed to be today and the second going to be? Can you explain a little bit about how we got to the point where the council has the option to first and second reading in the last council meeting of the year?
Sure. Originally, there was going to be a public hearing tonight, but there's a typo in the public hearing notice, so that's why tonight's session is simply an informational briefing and why there will be two readings at the December 5th meeting.
The council then has the option to just do first reading and then second reading in January, or do first and second reading at the same meeting in December. Is that right?
That's correct.
Council, do you have any questions on that? Councilmember Honda?
Can I ask questions of the whole presentation?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. I'd like to thank Jeff Stock. He met with any council member who wanted to meet with him last year to talk about this, and I'd like to thank him for that information. The, this agreement would go for 20 years, as I understand it, and so it's pretty much like a concomitant agreement, like the warehouser concomitant agreement, which doesn't have an ending, and I'm wondering why we have an ending for this one and we don't have an ending for the concomitant agreement with the warehouser property. The traffic study mitigation was based on a 2002 traffic study. It's 2017, and I'm wondering if you could explain that a little bit more. Traffic overall in the area in South King County has increased significantly in all those years. And I understand that, yeah, I have the, the public notice here in front of me, but I do think that, in my opinion, it would be best to allow the public to have at least two separate meetings where they could have the benefit of coming to talk to us if they had concerns. So could you explain about the ending date and why we need an ending date on this agreement?
Sure. Well, the expiration date of the agreement gives the city a chance to update the development requirements in the agreement. A lot of city standards change over time, primarily the stormwater requirements change about every other year, the local and state requirements, so, and, and other development requirements of the city change. So that gives us an opportunity to reassess those, update them as necessary. I can't speak to the warehouser agreement, but it's, it's always in the city's best interest to set an expiration date to renegotiate development agreements.
And the traffic study?
Sure. So the current baseline traffic data is based on a 1994 traffic study. So this would update that data to the latest traffic study available, which is from 2002. The traffic study was circulated for comments by all city staff, including the, the traffic engineer in Public Works. The boundaries of the park have not changed since it was incorporated, so it's, because the size hasn't changed, it's unlikely that the traffic generation from the park has changed either.
So what did the traffic study cover? And so what roads did it cover? Did it cover parking in the neighborhood? What exactly did the traffic study cover?
It does not go into detail about parking on the street and things like that outside of the park. It identifies the attendance at the park, the attendance figures, the peak afternoon trips. That's really what it studies, the sheer number of cars coming in and out of the park.
So just the road in front of the park or the surrounding roads that those cars would go on?
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it, it takes the total attendance for the park and breaks that down into how many vehicles enter the park per day, on an average day, on weekends, at peak times.
Dave, we got a, we got a senior traffic engineer right here. Rick Perez.
Thank you. So the, the purpose of the study was really to capture how much traffic was being generated by the facility, tying that to what the attendance figures were. And so it didn't look at off-site impacts, because the original analysis said off-site impacts would only be if additional traffic was being generated. One of the reasons it went to the 2002 study is that was one of their peaks in attendance. So that's, that was the intent there, is to just say, okay, it shouldn't get a whole lot worse than what it was in '02, in terms of the amount of traffic that was being generated by the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sephardoson? Oh, and then councilmember Selsky. Actually, Councilmember Selsky first. Okay. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I do have a question around traffic then, so 2002. So if the peak changes at any point in the future, would that generate a new study?
Okay, not necessarily, but there, there is some language, and we're still working out a few of the details about what would trigger a new analysis. And at this point, it's going to be based on what the peak volume is during the evening peak hour, which is not necessarily the peak of the facility, so it's also going to look at the average daily traffic being generated. So if all these thresholds are met, then there would be a new analysis.
Okay, thank you. Can I make one more?
Of course, yes.
And I want to take this opportunity to thank Wild Waves, especially Todd, for your generosity. My day job, I work with the Housing Authority, and there's been opportunities where you supported our kids when they were reading, and they were very appreciative. Thank you so, so much, because this is a great incentive for them to read during the summer, but also a great opportunity for them to enjoy the park where otherwise they might not be able to. So thank you very much for your, for your generosity. Thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, this is just a curiosity question for Dave. Dave, thank you. Generally speaking, and if you don't know the answer, it's fine, what is generally the height of various surrounding theme parks?
You know, I could not tell you.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious where Wild Waves matches up to that.
I don't know. We'd be happy to look into that before the December 5th hearing.
I would just be curious, because I can only imagine that there's a high set of demands on theme parks, and I certainly would like to see Fedway be in the competition with other, other parks as well. So, thank you.
This is a regional draw. We do have people coming all the way from Canada, all the way from Oregon. It's, it's a draw, especially where it's at geographically. Okay, council, any other, any other questions? All right, this is an informational item. Dave, thank you very much. The representatives from Wild Waves, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you for your work. All right. Now, moving on to item B, proposed purchase of the portion of 316th Street. Going back to that last item, it will be on the December 5th meeting, and obviously the council will have the opportunity to debate and see which direction they want to go. All right. We have a staff report from Desiree Winkler, the Public Works, Deputy Public Works Director. Desiree?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to take care of what will come clear as a housekeeping item for purchasing a portion of South 316th Street. So the policy question is, should the council authorize the mayor to purchase a portion of South 316th Street, known as King County, recording number 20130213001253, and the amount of $500, and execute all associated documents? So some background, I want to get your bearings straight, so you know where you are. I have a few maps and a street view. So this is South 316th Street, located east of Pacific Highway, which is over on the west side of this parcel map, and this is Pete Von Rockbier Boulevard, and this is a property that was developed originally and before incorporation, 1989, 90, so the new home goods store right in here. And this is, again, prior to incorporation, a parcel that was formed when this property developed and the road was built. So it's actually the road. If you look in the street view, it's pavement, it's sidewalk and everything, and typically when this happens, when development happens, they're supposed to dedicate the right-of-way. And something happened, and nobody knows exactly what, but the, the property, the right-of-way, was never formally dedicated. And so time goes on, boundary, boundary line adjustments happen, and this little sliver parcel becomes a tax title property that is really 316th Street. And we believe the adjacent property order paid taxes on it for quite some time until they stopped, whether the property changed hands or whatnot, we're not exactly sure. So then it basically goes into tax foreclosure, state seizes it, and then turns it over to King County. And then King County is supposed to surplus the parcel. Well, of course, there's really no value of it because it's right-of-way, and it needs to be cleaned up. So they contacted us and said, would you like to buy your street? Well, of course, we'd like to buy our street, but we're not going to pay the asking price because the asking price for this, if I were to look at what the actual right-of-way costs in quick calculations, somewhere at $75,000, $100,000. So truly, the $500 that we have agreed to, to pay is simply an administrative fee. It is something that we typically pay when we are releasing easements or getting easement releases from utilities, truly, again, to cover administrative costs. So once this happens and we have it in our hands, we will convert it to right-of-way and get rid of all those funny parcel lines and stuff like that. So that's truly the background, as best as we can tell, of how this happened. So the options before council are, one, to authorize the mayor to purchase a portion of South 316th Street, King County, recording number 20130213001253, and the amount of $500, and execute all associate documents, or do not authorize the purchase of this sliver of South 316th Street and provide direction to staff. The mayor recommends option one, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? All right. Councilmember Selsky, do you have a motion?
I do, but I, you know what, I do have just one comment. Would it be fair to say that this is the equivalent of getting a $75,000 grant? Because we all know how good our Public Works Department is at getting grants, so I think this is well worth it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So I move to authorize the mayor to purchase a portion of South 316th Street, King County, recording number 20130213001253, and the amount of $500, and execute, execute all associated documents.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes. Thank you very much, Desiree. All right. The 2017 to 19 Transportation Demand Management Implementation Agreement, it's kind of a mouthful, staff report from Rick Perez, City Traffic Engineer. Please proceed, Rick.
Thank you. And so this agreement, well, the policy question is, should the council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation, allowing the state to reimburse the city for its share of technical assistance funding for implementing the state commute trip reduction law? So what that all entails is, we have the Commute Trip Reduction Act, where we are required to work with employers that have more than 100 people showing up for work between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. to try and get them to reduce their drive-alone rates and hopefully reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and all that other mom and apple pie stuff. So the state passes out money to agencies with affected employers, and then we would either spend it on our own staff or hire somebody to do the work for us. So that's, there's two agreements here tonight, and this is the first one where we accept the money from the state. So, yeah, remember, this is the statute, and so the options before the council are to, one, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with WashDOT to accept the technical funds for $38,869 for the state's 2017 to 2019 biennium, or do not authorize the mayor to enter in the agreement and implement CTR as required by state law and local CTR ordinance. Without the technical fund, the city would need to allocate budget in the amount of $38,869 for the 2017-19 state biennium. So, mayor recommendation is for approving option one. And so, happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yes. The, does the technical assistance include bus passes or carpool, or is it just strictly staff?
That is, it is trying to provide the employers the resources to help them develop a program that would then help reduce those trips. So, no, we're not paying, you know, employers directly to assist their efforts to fund those. They have to provide that themselves. And the city, city hall is actually an affected worksite ourselves, and we have an incentive program for employees here as well. So that's a separate fund.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Rick. I appreciate it. All right, Councilmember Selsky.
I move approval of the Transportation, Transportation Demand Management Implementation Agreement with WashDOT to accept state CTR funds in the amount of $38,869 as proposed.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Now, Rick, you've got the next one, which is the 2017-19 Commit Trip, Commute Trip Reduction CTR Program Implementation Agreement with King County.
Yes, and the policy question is, should the council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with King County for CTR program implementation? So essentially, state gives us the money, we hire King County to do most of the legwork in working with the affected employers in the city to help them, assist them reach their commute trip reduction goals. So what we have proposed then is a scope of work that will use up most of the money and actually reserving a little bit for our staff time. So, again, the statutes involved and the city code to how we're going to implement the plan, and so the options before us are, one, authorize the mayor to enter an agreement with King County in the amount of $33,646 for CTR implementation, or, two, do not authorize the mayor to enter an agreement and hire part-time, .6 FTEs CTR coordinator. The city would need to identify and supplement additional budget on a yearly basis to cover employee cost and program startup. So, mayor recommends approving option one. So, that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Selsky?
I move approval of the agreement with King County as proposed.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, great job, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ordinances, number nine. First reading, we've got Council Bill Number 729, the 2017-18 Mid-Biennial Budget Amendment. This is an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, amending the 2017-18 Biennial Budget, amending ordinance 16-826. The information about this was presented during the public hearing of, earlier this meeting. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title, even though I just did? Now you go. Now, you go.
Council Bill 729, 2017-18 Mid-Biennial Budget Amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 Biennial Budget.
All right, now it's official. Okay, thank you. Councilmember DuKlo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I moved to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 5th, 2017 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
There a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Okay, Council Bill, actually, item B, Council Bill 730, Setting the Property Tax Rate for 2018. Again, the information presented during the above public hearing. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 730, Setting the Property Tax Rate for 2018, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to fixing the property tax amount for the year 2018.
Okay. Councilmember Honda.
DuKlo.
Gosh. Councilmember DuKlo. Honda's here, DuKlo's here. Exactly.
I moved to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 5th, 2017 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, counsel report.
May I suggest you get new glasses?
I, you know, I'm going to, actually. I think the COSCO readers have had their day.
I think so.
Very good. Councilmember DuKlo.
I don't have any report, other than to wish everybody a very, very happy Thanksgiving and joyous weekend.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, we had a very nice reception today for Councilmember Bob Selsky. I had the honor of going around with the puffs and offering people cream puffs and pretzels, and I was sadly disappointed that Ryan Call, I couldn't get him to take a pretzel. So I was disappointed about that. But moving forward with my report, Mr. Mayor, I do want to say in all seriousness, thank you to the family that, to the Hunter family, for sharing up here. I know it was courageous, and I know it was bold, and I know that this concerns, and I will kind of cut myself short just because there's a court case on this. But I just want to let you know that I hear you. As an elected official, I hear you. And so, thank you for sharing that. Also, want to take the time to thank the voters. It's something I don't ever take lightly at all, and I am incredibly grateful and blessed to have this opportunity to be up here. And I look forward to continuing to learn. I look forward to continuing to excel, to deliver, to listen, to protect our residents, and to protect the City of Fedaway. And so I'm excited to continue to serve here in the next four years. And, you know, I'm here to serve everybody. I'm here to serve Republicans, Democrats, independents, whoever you are, concerned citizen, a citizen that is excited about a project. You know, I'm here for everybody. And so I'm going to continue to be engaged, and, thank you, Dana. And I continue, and I look forward to just being as, you know, I look forward to being reachable is the word I'm looking forward to, the word I'm looking for. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will end by saying happy Thanksgiving to all of our families here. I do recognize that not everybody has families, and that there are people out in the cold, and so I am thinking and praying for them. But in the meantime, I hope everybody gets a meal on Thursday. And with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Copan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will keep my report brief. I just wanted to say I was got the opportunity to be in these very chambers for an advancing leadership session along with the mayor and Judge Larson and Claire Wilson from the school board and Chief Al Church, speaking about government and the impact that we can have as public servants. And, you know, I use that term, we are public servants, and that's really the position that I really approach this from. And my service, I really appreciate having the opportunity to speak to a group of leaders in advancing leadership that really want to develop their leadership skills and continue to grow and develop their influence within the community and make a difference. Also want to thank the Kiwanis and the Historical Society for a great event on Veterans Day. I think for us to continue to remember the veterans who served and make it possible for us to have elections, and as trying as those elections can be, that is the will of the people being represented in that process. And always thankful for them to be over, but I always am appreciative of the opportunity that we do have to choose the people that represent us as a people. So anyway, thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right. Councilwoman Honda.
Thank you. I also want to talk about the Veterans Day program. It was sponsored by the Historical Society and the Noon Kiwanis Club of Federal Way. And our keynote speaker was a gentleman who talked about honor flights. So honor flights are flights to Washington, D.C. for a veteran from World War II, the Korean War, or even the Vietnam War, if their health is in jeopardy. And it's a free flight offered to the veterans so that they can go back to D.C. and see the monuments for their service. And if you know of a veteran, especially a World War II veteran or a Korean War veteran who would like to participate, you can contact myself or Diana Noble Gulliford. We would love to get them in touch with this program because every veteran should have the opportunity to take part of this. There is no cost to the veteran. All of their needs are taken care of. If they can't walk, there'll be someone there to help them. If they have any medical needs, there's nurses on the flights, on the airplanes. There's doctors and nurses on the site in D.C. to help them. It's a really special weekend, or, well, it's about three days. And I know our Judge Larson has gone on two of the flights to help the veterans. And so, please, if you know of anyone who would be interested, we would really want to get them to D.C. because it is a special thing for them. I also want to talk about Association of Washington Cities was here in Federal Way a couple weeks ago. They were giving an update on their legislative agenda for 2018. Council Member Sephardos was there. I was there. Councilmember Moore was there. The mayor came to welcome the participants. And we spent about three hours talking about our cities, the good things, the bad things, the things we'd like to improve, and the legislative agenda. So that was great. It was really good that they were here in Federal Way because generally, they don't come to Federal Way. And if we want to participate, we have to travel far to where they go. So we had people from all over the Puget Sound region here in Federal Way. And Councilmember Sephardos and I just returned from a conference in Minnesota, Minneapolis, Minnesota, where it was much colder than it is here. It's the National Foundation of Women Legislators, and we both had the opportunity to speak at the conference. Lydia spoke about the King County Housing Authority and what they do for folks here in King County. And I was able to speak about the Homeless Women and Children's Initiative here in Federal Way. As soon as we left the stage, I had several legislators from around the country reach out to tell me what they're doing in their states and offer some great advice. So it was a great conference. I learned a lot. It was probably one of the better conferences I've ever been to. So that was our week. Anyway, thank you very much. Remember, holidays can be stressful. If you know somebody who is lonely, doesn't matter if they're elderly or young, please reach out because holidays can be a really happy time for a lot of people, but for a lot of people, they're not. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rosowski.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell. So when I was up to the podium a little bit ago, I had a chance to thank my colleagues on the council, for whom I have tremendous respect, and of course, the mayor, and for the community to, that allowed me the opportunity to serve here on this capacity. But what I failed to mention, and I didn't talk about, is the tremendous staff that the city has working for it. And our community has great leaders in our directors, who sit at the row over there, who lead the wonderful staff that we have in very technical and tough areas to make sure that they serve the community in a complete fashion. And I can just tell you, they do a tremendous job. I've worked with staffs for many decades now, both in the military and in a civilian capacity and business. And this is as good as it gets. I just can't say how enjoyable it has been to work with each and every one of you, and those that work for you as well. And I've learned a tremendous amount from each of you. It's been great, and I just really appreciate the work you do. Sometimes it's thanked, and sometimes it's thankless, but it is always present, and it's continuous. So thank you so much for all you do. And with that, I will sign off.
Okay. Councilwoman Sephardos.
Sorry. Yes, just to add to what Councilmember Honda said about the conference, it was a great conference. There were a lot of takeaways. Some of the topics that were very valuable were like, get smart about your community. And then there was the human trafficking, aging and family care caregiver. But then also, for me, there was workforce development. And McDonald's and Walmart both talked about their scholarship programs that they offer to their employees. And so this is something I never knew about both organizations, that they're very supportive about their own employees' growth and development, and also, again, around their education. So that was great to know. And now referring to McDonald's would be great by encouraging people to save you on your education for free. You can work there. So it was a great conference, like Councilmember Honda said. And I just want to say again, thank you to you, Bob. I enjoyed having you on this side for a while. And so, I, again, I just want to say I do appreciate you, and I know this has allowed us to form a great ongoing friendship, and so I do appreciate you. And I also appreciate things that you notice and bring to the table outside of this council stuff. So thank you very much. And on a personal note, I want to say that I believe I'm a homeowner in Federal Way, which makes me official. Now, I can't go anywhere. I live here. I mean, I've lived here for a while, but I've been a renter for a number of years, and it feels good. So, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving. This is my Thanksgiving report. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Lydia. That's great. Deputy Mayor Berman.
Thank you very much. I attended a meeting this morning of the South County Area Transportation Board at Sea-Tac City Hall, and we had some presentations. One was from King County Metro Transit, and they gave us a presentation on something they're working on, which is called Metro Connects. And this is, this project has a goal of reaching a target of providing enough additional transit that by, well, let's see, I don't see the actual goal date here of reaching this, but their goal is to achieve the target of 73% of residents being within one-half mile of frequent transit service, which is a really high goal, I would say, for Metro Transit to be working toward. And there certainly is more detail about this online, if you're interested in looking at that. We also had a presentation from Kelly McGordy of Puget Sound Regional Council regarding the transportation project selection process for 2018. And indeed, there is information available on that as well. The third major item was to work on developing the legislative agenda for the South County Area Transportation Board, and I volunteered for the committee to work on that additionally. So then, I also wanted to mention that I was able to attend the Homeless Mothers and Children Initiative meeting, where the faith community had such a really wonderful turnout. And I was very impressed with the interest and the motivation expressed by those folks at that meeting, and also by the presentation by the Mary's Place representatives. So I'm looking forward to seeing some really important developments and work done with that, and want to thank everyone involved in that process. Also, I want to thank Tim Johnson and everyone who was involved in the day that we had Terry Powers come, the Vice President of USA Diving come, and that was mentioned by the mayor earlier this evening. But I was able to participate in part of that and thought the city just did a bang-up job in that whole day of events. I was there for a good part of it, and Terry Powers sent a very nice, personal thank you note. And one of the things he says here is the hospitality was second to none. So, and he's hoping to return soon. So that's encouraging as well. But, you know, the hoteliers presented to him, he had a tour of the Aquatic Center, our police chief, Andy Wong, talked to him about security. And then we had that outstanding reception at the Performing Arts and Events Center, and our Federal Way Youth Symphony Orchestra performed in the lobby. And then there was the reception in one of the meeting rooms. So it was just a truly wonderful, wonderful day and presentation by everybody who was able to participate. So I just would add my additional thank yous, personal thank you to Bob Selsky for his devotion and dedication to our city, and wish everyone an enjoyable Thanksgiving.
Well, I wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I can tell you, I'm thankful for a great council, a great city staff, and a very generous and giving community. With that, we are adjourned.